To the regular city council meeting of December 17th, 2018. We do have a quorum. Let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approved the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. Here on place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
I move to approve the agenda.
Are we going to remove that?
We need to remove item D, don't we?
Okay.
Okay. Remove D. Motion's been made by councilmember Lundberg, second by Alderman Hercock, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes for the special work session meeting of December 3rd, 2018, and the regular city council meeting of December 3rd, 2018, and the closed meeting of December 3rd, 2018 are enclosed. What is the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by councilmember Knopfler, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills. Checks number 99778 through 99877 totaling $306,846.80. What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by councilmember Hanson, to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donations, presentations, proclamations, we have none tonight. Consent agenda. Animal control report, November 2018, receive. Fire report, November 2018, receive. Placement of advertising bench, JMR II investments, approve. Public works report, November 2018, receive. Wastewater report, November 2018, receive. Water report, November 2018, receive. What is the wish of the council on the consent?
Mr. President, I move we receive the items for the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Hanson, second by councilmember Lundberg, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lettings, Barrett Egg Service, DBA Barrett Pet Food Innovations, joint public hearing with the Economic Development Authority. So, DDA wanted to come up to the table. And then also, our public hearing procedure was over there on the bench. So during the public input, we ask you to raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Individuals have up to two minutes. Be germane and concise, and shall not exceed two times with a maximum, or two minutes with a maximum of two times.
I would ask that, speaking here, we have no microphone, so please speak up. I'll call the EDA meeting of December 17th to order. We do have a quorum, and I would maintain the motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Question goes on it. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings, this is going to be joint with the council, and President Hansler will be running the public hearing. 7:34, we'll open the public hearing for Barrett Egg Service, who has Barrett Pet Food Innovations, for business subsidy. John, did you want to?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll start up. We'll, we have representatives here from Barrett, as well as Jason Murray from David Dronan Associates, and Carol Anderson from Morrison County Community Development. I will actually turn it over to them to give the introduction and background information before we go for the public input area. So, Carol?
Okay, Carol Anderson from Community Development of Morrison County. I'm just here to introduce the project right now. Tom and Mike Barrett are here. They're some of the owners of Barrett Pet Food. This is to give information on what they would like to do with their expansion to Little Falls. This would be 150,000 square foot facility on property east of Highway 10, just before the 371 split. The total project is approximately $20 million, including building and equipment. They will have approximately 100 jobs, three, within three years after the construction of the facility is complete. It's going to take about a year to build the facility and get the equipment set. I will let the Barretts talk about their customers, their benefits, wages they pay. They manufacture a vast array of pet food for a variety of animals. So with that, I would like to introduce Tom and Mike Barrett.
Good evening, everybody. As mentioned by Carol, I'm Tom Barrett. I co-manage Barrett Pet Food with my sister, co-own it with my father and my mother, Mike and Bunny. She's not here this evening. So we are a small, at least in manufacturing terms, pet food manufacturer in Brainerd, between Brainerd and Pierce. We specialize in manufacturing pet food, mainly super premium pet food for dogs and cats, but also for small animals, birds, that type of thing, but generally dog and cat food. We manufacture for foods for companies all over the world. A lot of our exports will go to Asia, Canada, South America, but primarily here in the U.S. and Canada. Our customer base ranges from customers in California, to Toronto, to the United Kingdom, to right here in Minnesota. So we have quite a range of customers and, as well as end-users of the food that we make. Currently, our company consists of just about 100 employees in our facility, south of Brainerd. We've been growing at a rate of about 30 employees a year for the last couple of years. Generally, we were doubling. Now it's, you know, as we've gotten bigger, not quite doubling, but close to it. I've been part of the business since 2009. My father started it a few years prior to that, and initially started the business as a feed and fertilizer business. And when Sarah and I got involved, turned it into pet food, and then eventually super premium pet food. And so that's where we've really grown our business. We have, of our 100 employees, we like to think that we provide a good place to work. We have, out of the 100 employees, generally speaking, we have very low turnover. I would say that if somebody works for us for a month, they don't leave. I think we've lost two people that have been with us over two years in the last five years, and that was both retirements. So we do try to focus on having a happy, healthy place to work with good benefits, good pay, and that's how we try to attract our employees. So that's obviously something that is important to us, something that we would like to bring here to Little Falls. It is, it is part of our culture to foster that and ensure that we give something back to the community, which I think Brainerd would probably say the same, although we're not necessarily in the city limits of Brainerd, but we do try to ensure that we give back to the community in several ways, but obviously I think our employees would speak for that. So, I think that's all I got.
Well, I don't really have anything to say. Tom kind of said it all, but I did bring some samples of what we make, if anybody's interested. Maybe, um...
Thank you, sweetie.
Yeah, I'll set them off here. But if anybody wants them, I really don't want to take them all. You got stuff for me? Yeah, don't miss the bearded dragon. Yeah, I think the closest you can get any of that's probably Chuck and Don's, huh?
Well, the only natural, and the replica would be found in PetSmart, St. Cloud, Petco as well, as well as, I know that there is one pet specialty store in Sartell that sells several of the booths, signature booths, just one of our biggest sellers. But generally, you will find them in independent pet booth stores throughout the U.S.
Good evening, council and EDA members. As part of the business subsidy law, the requirement on this public hearing is that we fully disclose potential assistance through the city and other local resources. As part of this, we anticipate a max of about $3 million in local assistance. As part of that $3 million, it will be part of the Minnesota Investment Program targeted for $450,000. My understanding, the city's already held that public hearing on that application. A potential request up to $500,000 to the Little Falls EDA for a revolving loan fund. We'll discuss TIF here in a moment, but the potential maximum assistance through the tax increment financing is $1.3 million, $115,000. And then the final portion of it, yet to be, a dollar amount yet to be zeroed in on is a utility extension with the local gas company. We're anticipating between $570,000, $750,000? Is that correct, Carol? Or is it trending in the, about that $750, potentially? Okay. For assistance in that. So the total max through these programs, or through the assistance, and again, this isn't directly through the city as part of the Minnesota Investment Fund, that's a relationship with the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, and potentially through the utility side, a relationship either with USDA or another state program to provide some assistance with that extension of that utility. So, again, just for full disclosure, max of $3 million of total assistance.
Thank you. With that, we'll open it up for public comment. If anyone in the public wants to speak, I ask you to raise your hand, and state your name and address for record.
The voters spoke clearly. Oh, Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. The voters spoke clearly when they ousted Council President Jeremy Handler, then Mayor, Rogue Mayor Zelka, who obviously doesn't care what the voters think, promptly appointed Jeremy to the Economic Development Association, of which he is the president. Zelka's the president, that is. Of course, Zelka wants a yes man on board, so he can assure pet projects such as Barrett Foods, Pet Foods gets to the head of the line regardless, if the taxpayers lose out. I oppose. If Barrett Pet Foods cannot make a profit without taxpayer-funded corporate welfare dollars, they should go work for someone who can. Nothing personal, I just oppose economic grants in general, and for a lot of reasons you're about to hear. In an article, "Little Falls Council Supports Barrett Expansion," quote, "We kind of pride ourselves on making anything no one else wants to do," Mike said. Mike said, "The odor was minimal because the company doesn't use products like intestines and other scraps." Mayor Greg Zelka said, "Based on a tour he took of the current facility, there was not a terrible odor. It doesn't smell like a meat processing facility," Zelka said. But, in another interview where Klobuchar visits Brainerd area pet food maker from the Brainerd Dispatch, it says, "The smell of pet food was pungent even outside the building, and the factory itself had deafening noise. Those on tour were given white coats to wear so the smell didn't transfer to their clothing." I believe the Barrett folks spoke here about using kangaroo meats. From Rocky Pellegrino's roo pet food crumble is proving popular overseas. The smell of dead roo unmistakably to anyone who has cooked or worked with the animals is overwhelming in Rocky's small work shed, where a team of three workers process a couple of marsupials each week.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Shannon Marson, 15480, 17th Avenue Northeast. Some of you probably remember, we built a new facility out in the same business park. And we also have an employee that drives past that plant every day, and he's never smelled anything. And I've talked to people in Pierce at various times, and also said, "There's no smell." So, from a fellow business member in the park, we're actually looking forward to these folks coming to town and creating more opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Linda Burgraph, 1032 Fifth Avenue Southeast, Little Falls. As a previous small business owner in Little Falls, I am in favor of the city helping Barrett Pet Food Innovations with funding to help them expand their company into Little Falls. It will bring much-needed jobs into the area, jobs which will help other businesses grow, which means more jobs. We need businesses in town that pay good wages and benefits. Thank you.
Jason Johnson, 15480, 17th Avenue Northeast. I am also in favor of this project. We are neighbors to the future location proposed here. I think it's a wonderful thing. We are a perfect example of a small business that has come to town with help from the city. And I look at just the initial impact and the things that people that come to see our business spend in town, the money we spend in town, buy from other local people. We've bought vehicles, we've hired employees, we've hired people. It has all been positive. And what these people can bring to this community far outshadows what we do. And I think it's, it's an amazing opportunity, and I look forward to them being my neighbor.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else where we start around you?
A new study from the Reason Foundation employs a simple scientific model filled with county-level job creation database and business tax incentive data to explore the relationships between tax incentives and job creation to answer that very question. The study finds no correlation between tax incentives and job creation, suggesting the program and perhaps others like it have serious flaws to their ability to create jobs. The logic of this model is that by comparing two groups of counties that are similar in many ways, except for their incentive spending, we should expect counties with more incentive spending to have more jobs. The findings shown in the accompanying graph reveal that despite spending more than their counterparts on job creation tax credits, the incentive-heavy counties realize no appreciable long-term gains in either gross or net job creation. This is largely because the success rate of companies is highly volatile. Some, 96% of companies fail within 10 years, taking jobs and capital down with them like a sinking ship. Incentive programs fail because they do not account for the fact that firms and the returns they are bidding on are highly volatile and prone to failure. Policymakers should not trust any job creation projects from a firm seeking incentives or a consultant enough to risk public money in order to just potentially win those benefits. And I have a question. I would like somebody, after all the public hearing is done, to please explain. Item number three says, "The expected increased estimated tax market value of the site without the use of tax increment is $13,428." For a 52-plus acre parcel? Folks, that's $250 an acre. How can that be possible? This city is saying that if...
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Third and final call, anyone else wish to speak? $750, we'll close the public hearing. And there's no action on this item tonight. Hey, any comments or questions by the EDA? I'd like to make a couple comments. First of all, I did tour that site more than once, and other people in the audience have, and I did not smell any strong odors on the inside, much less on the outside when we drove up. I wasn't even sure I was in the right place. Second of all, job creation that we've done for ABS, worked with them, there's other communities looking for these businesses. We looked at what we did with Wabash, how many jobs we created there. We worked with Airborne. We have brought so much business to this community that we had to work for, and most if not all of it is built on land that has not generated property tax for us, because it's been, this is school land, so we haven't been generating tax off of that. And most of it has been on city land, which we generated. So why let it sit empty for another 10, 20 years and get nothing for it, when we can do TIF or whatever we're doing for 10 years, and then after that, we'll be drawing full property tax value? We're bringing in good businesses, and I don't like the term corporate welfare, because you tell those 100 people at Wabash that we shouldn't do this, you tell the 75 or whatever they have at Airborne, we shouldn't do this, you tell these people that are going to be coming here, working for Barrett, that we shouldn't do this. This is good jobs, good benefits, and great community, and that's how we're going to do great. Does anybody else have a comment?
I'll echo that. I think, I think this is one, I've been in the EDA, I don't know how many years it is, and that's quite a few, this is the best deal I've seen in my whole term on the EDA. Carol's done a wonderful job on this. I don't see how we could turn this down. It would be crazy. Absolutely would be crazy. That's all I got.
Comments from the council?
I agree. I support it. I think it's going to be a boon for this town, and we need jobs, and we need new businesses.
My understanding is that the 10 years of TIF, the, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but those, the taxes, the property taxes that come to the city will be used to pay for that property. And then after that, what's the tax on a 10 mil, what, how many million-dollar building is this, facility is this? 10? 10. What are the property taxes on a $10 million facility? After 10 years, that's going to come to the city. If we don't do this, it's likely that this wonderful company that offers such great wages and such an excellent benefits package will go elsewhere. We need these jobs here in Little Falls. So we really do need to do this.
I'm going to add that. If Carol hadn't done, put this together, we probably wouldn't have gotten this company. They probably would have gone to Brain or someone else. This is a very competitive market for businesses like this. We have to fight tooth and nail to get these kinds of companies to come here. I don't think people understand the free market that's out there, and how many possibilities there are for companies like this to go other places. So, yes, I think we have to do this, absolutely.
Any other comments?
Well, just, we, it wasn't discussed this time, but I think it was at the last meeting. You, your organization sponsors 100% the healthcare coverage for the employees, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Nobody else gets a deal like that. I, I don't...
It's also a low deductible Medicaid insurance that is good at any hospitals or clinics, so it's certainly not the cheapest plan that we could choose for employees.
I just, I, I believe we need options, jobs for people to stay here. I don't, I'd like to see the statistics. I don't know. Maybe Mark Gerby knows what percentage of our high school graduates we lose out of this community every single year. And I, and I just, I want people to stick around and raise their family. It's more than just looking, the myopic view of that particular building, it also includes them buying homes, paying property taxes on nicer homes, and the water utilities. It's more than just this building.
It's 100 people's livelihoods, you know, and it's a good living, and they're going to live here, and they're going to build here, just like, just like Leif said, and they're going to spend their money here, and it's, this money is going to stay in the community. Thank you for choosing Little Falls.
Thank you. And a big thanks to Carol, obviously. You're very correct with that, obviously. We, before we, we booked up Little Falls, when Carol came into the picture, obviously we were, our inkling was to look at Brainerd, because that's where we're from, it's the only place that we've ever manufactured. And obviously, yes, they were very interested, and we could have gotten the same type of package from Brainerd, as well as communities around St. Cloud. But Carol brought so much to the table, we met, you know, the mayor and the rest of the team from Little Falls, and it just felt like the right opportunity. And once that ball started rolling, we basically stopped searching for another site, it just, it felt like the right place for us, obviously. Not that it's not local to us, we're, you know, south of town, Brainerders, but it really, we felt, it felt like it's the right opportunity, it's the right place to be.
Comments from the EDA? If not, I maintain, I mean, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion, the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-87, tax increment financing, district number 41. Adopt. So Lori, or John?
Again, council president, this is the second public hearing that we'll have tonight, so we need to call for the public hearing.
7:59, we'll call the public hearing to order.
Yes, this is for the tax increment financing district for the project that will encompass the property that is of interest for Barrett Pet Foods. This is primarily school district property. There will be some additional areas for roadway improvements that are included as well in this district. And we have Jason Murray here from David Dronan Associates to go through the... from David Drone and Associates to go through the finer details of this. If the project were not to be successful and not to move forward, we would just not certify the district, so at this time, it's, we would have the resolution, if the resolution is passed, the district would be able to be established. We don't have to certify the district to implement the TIF financing on that, so it's not, it's something that, still, if there's contingency or concern that if the project weren't to move forward, at this time, we're not anticipating that, we're just at a, at a point where other pieces need to fall into place as well, but this being a critical component of that as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason to give some more background on the TIF district.
Thanks, John. Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight, you're holding this public hearing to debate the merits of establishing Tax Increment Financing District Number 41. This is an economic development TIF district, which requires, main requirement is going to find that there's jobs and wage creation as part of it. As disclosed earlier, you've heard the, the project scope, the number of job potential for this project, and so we clearly believe this will certainly meet the merits of the law. As part of the Economic Development TIF district, it is a nine-year increment. The increment starts, the first year full value is anticipated, based on the current construction timeline that's been provided, we're looking at 2021, 2022 being the first year of estimated increment to be collected. As part of this TIF district, it is a one parcel TIF district, as John indicated, we are encompassing the parcel currently owned by the school district, along with citing some additional roads adjacent to the property for potential improvement. As we currently speak today, we noted in the business subsidy hearing that potential capital costs through this TIF district is about 1.3 million, 1,315,000 as part of this TIF district. The potential for use of that, currently, there's two obligations being discussed, one is the, to reimburse the school district for the property, using increment as it's collected to reimburse the school district over time, over those nine years, and then the second obligation is potentially to pay for an outstanding assessment that currently lies on the property. So as we speak today, those are the two obligations that potentially will come from this TIF district, and again, as we move forward, if this project does commence, we will certainly be back in front of the council with a formal business development, business subsidy agreement that outlines these obligations in greater detail. So with that, Mr. President, Mayor, and council members, I'll pause my comments on the TIF district, or if you have any questions, I can answer them at this time too, but I can pause and let the public hearing commence.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. This time, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Go ahead, Robin.
Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. It's important for the taxpayers in this city to know that the school district tried vigorously to get rid of the tax, the assessments on the property. There'll be more about that in the future. I oppose this TIF district financing. How the excess TIF program performed matters because home and business owners pay a higher share of property taxes when money is diverted to building projects, according to critics of such incentives. If it were true that no real estate appreciation would have occurred in the TIF district but for the TIF activities overlying governments, such as school districts and other special districts, would get the same amount of property tax revenue that they would have received without the TIF district. Unfortunately, these rules set up potentially perverse incentives by allowing cities to claim property tax revenue that might not have received in the absence of the TIF. If TIF district expenditures are not documented in detail, observers may also suspect misuse of funds, such as money funnel to political allies, in particular egregious cases. TIF can facilitate unproductive fiscal competition between neighboring jurisdictions, business tax incentives in general, and TIF in particular are vulnerable to overuse if potential beneficiaries can stimulate or a virtual or actual bidding war among competing governments. A business that is considered an expansion or relocation may use the existence of tax incentive programs to obtain benefits or threaten to leave to obtain more, even when the location would be to the business's most profitable option, even without the benefits. Economic theory suggests that under some conditions, such negotiations can reduce economic efficiency. Recent empirical evidence shows-
Time's up, Robin, thank you.
-that business tax incentives in general-
Time's up.
...are not well targeted and often do little to stimulate economic growth.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, Robin, go ahead.
Unfortunately, the design of TIF in many states makes it vulnerable to exploitation by cities, which can obtain revenues that otherwise would have gone to overlying governments, especially school districts. Within individual states and cities, most often, TIF has been used in areas that were already moderately successful, and it has done little to stimulate growth in the most depressed areas. Business subsidies do not generate sustained economic growth. One reason is that subsidies are ultimately funded by higher taxes, which displays private sector investment. Another reason is that areas which become dependent on subsidies can lose their competitive edge and stagnate, just as individuals on welfare tend to stagnate. A better way for distressed regions to spur growth is to reform state and local tax and regulatory policies to encourage entrepreneurship and private investment. The EDA does not have any special abilities to revive growth that the states and private sector do not have. The federal funding of industrial parks, road projects, and other activities through the EDA just adds federal bureaucracy. The EDA also pits jurisdictions against one another in a zero-sum game when subsidies induce businesses to invest in some locations over others. Congress should abolish the EDA. The author also examines additional academic literature about the impact of TIF on school districts and other potential unintended side effects. The report concludes that although the results are mixed, TIF often fails to meet its primary goal to increase real estate development and other economic growth. And as my sign says tonight, do the right thing. There's a lot of empirical evidence to show that economic grants of any type do not work, do not benefit the taxpayer. If you doubt me, do your own research.
Time's up, thank you. Believe me, we'll do the right thing. Third and final call, anyone else wish to speak?
Jim Starley, 601 Seventh Avenue, Southwest Little Falls. I'm kind of just neutral on this, because there's a few things that I'm not quite sure of. I drive through town, and we've got help wanted signs at Falls Fab, out at the old ethanol plant, Airborne has something in the paper all the time. How are we helping the people in our community already to supply them with good workers, and so they can maximize their ability to manufacture goods, to bring people into town here, when they're already paying their fair, you know, in their taxes and stuff? Like I say, I'm not against this, I'm not for it either, I need, I'm looking for some answers on, how do we, how do we fill the positions that the current people within our city need help with workers, along with, you know, are they gonna, you know, if this, if they come into town, are they gonna, are they gonna take workers from these other facilities, and then now, now that's going to decrease their ability to make product for their customers? I guess I just, it's something I would like answered.
Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none, 8:10, we'll close the public hearing. Council discussion? Action for discussion?
You looking for a motion?
Yes, he is. Absolutely.
Okay, I move we adopt Resolution 2018-87. I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Conopla, on Resolution Number 2018-87. Discussion. Hearing none, resolution call a roll.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
On letting snow truck box and snow removal equipment, Towmaster Truck Equipment, Public Works, Greg?
Yeah, this is the, essentially the second half of the, the new plow truck that we're looking at acquiring. If you recall back in March, we purchased the chassis of the plow truck, now we're looking at fitting, outfitting the chassis with the snow removal equipment, so we've got a price from Towmaster in the amount of $106,994 plus tax title and license that we're asking the council to approve this evening. That is included in our 2019 budget, but we'd like to get this ordered as soon as possible so that we can get it in the works to get created.
What's the wish of the council?
I move to award.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Alderman Hercock, to award the bid. Any discussion?
Really quick, Mr. President-
Go ahead.
Did we get, is this state bid, or?
This is not the state bid, yes.
Okay.
And if I read correctly, the blades are coming from here?
That is correct, yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, old business resolution 2018-81, accept feasibility report and call for public hearing, surface and utility improvements, Block 22, Water and Power Company, Number Two. Greg?
Yeah, this evening in front of you, we've got the feasibility report for the petition project. If you recall, there was a little over 35% that petition to have, two avenues and one alley, two blocks of the avenue and one alley to be paved. If you look at page 38, it gives you a picture of kind of where that's at, it's in between 9th and 10th Street on the southwest side of town on 7th and 8th Avenue. So this evening, we are asking the council to call for the public hearing for that on January 22nd at 7:30 here in the council chambers.
What's the wish of the council?
We're just calling for a public hearing.
Yep.
That's correct.
I still move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve Resolution 2018-81. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution call a roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, amend city council motion of March 19, 2018, plow truck chassis, NUS. Truck, approve?
Yeah, so when we approved the purchase of the plow chassis for our new plow truck back in March, I didn't have on the motion to include tax title and license, so the price is the same on it, it's just it includes the tax title and license on the, on the piece of equipment, so if we could amend that motion to include that, I would appreciate it.
Wish of the council?
Make a motion to amend, second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Alderman Hercock, to approve and amend. Any discussion?
I have a simple question.
Go ahead.
Why are we not tax exempt from something like this?
We are on everything but vehicles, motor, licensed motorized vehicles.
So 6.5% sales tax, and then the title fee?
Yeah, and license, yeah. We don't pay the full license, we pay a reduced tax exempt plate license, but we do have to pay the sales tax.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, housing redevelopment authority recommendation, ordinance Number 13, 7 series, sale of property, Adam and Roxanne Jalinski, accept, introduce. Laurie?
Yes, Adam and Roxanne Jalinski have made an offer to purchase some property that's adjacent to their property on Northwest Little Falls. There is a map included with the purchase agreement. They did offer $5,000 for the property, and the map that's included is incorrect. They did make an offer of $5,000 on the property, and the HRA did have a public hearing and is approving or recommending the sale of the property. It is a triangular piece of property that is directly north of property they own that abuts the railroad. It's not really a buildable site, city owns it, and it's sitting there, so it makes no sense for us to have that property, we have no use for it, and it just makes sense to sell it and get some tax revenue off of it. And I apologize that the map is the incorrect map.
Actually, we don't even have a map.
I think John was trying to bring it up, so.
Did we see this at our last meeting?
I think we talked about it before.
We, we had it, I think, two meetings ago, we took it off the agenda because the HRA needed to make their recommendation, and they weren't able to at the time.
We sent them a beacon at that time.
Yeah.
What are the different ramifications coming from HRA, not just the city, because I'm not aware of what was talked about at those meetings? If it was just straight up city-owned property, then I'd be questioning, this sure looks like a sweetheart deal, looks like a buildable lot to me, I mean, it's a full block long, I understand it's triangle shape, but it goes all the way past what I'm assuming is a paper alley.
Just a railroad.
Correct, it's not quite a full block long, if I remember correctly, and I did talk to Ben, and it is a buildable lot, but it's only at 70% of what the required lot size is, because of the, you know, the back is very narrow, and it's based on square footage, not on just the road, what's on the road right away.
Is there some, is that an abandoned railroad track?
Yes.
Can I look, click on that parcel ending, and it looks like 8,000?
Yes, he's doing the measuring quick.
Yeah.
Yes, they own that property as well.
Yeah, and I think if you click on the report showing the property tax, it's like $48 a year, so we can say we're going to get it on the tax rolls.
But it isn't going to amount to anything.
It ain't amounting to nothing, no. We can't tell for buildable lot, so.
And they'll maintain it, then, if they own it?
Correct.
$48 a year, so on the tax rolls, and then...
We're getting roughly a third of that? It makes sense to sell it to them, but to me, the price is kind of low. How does that compare to the square footage on other ones we've sold to people looking to build a house for like $15,000, $16,000?
Right, it is, it is less, but again, it's, it is considered a buildable lot, but it's only at 70% of, and I forget exactly what Ben told me, but he said it's like, if you do the measurements and do the setbacks, it's at 70% of what a normal lot would be.
Well, it's a non-conforming lot. Correct?
That's my understanding.
It's not a 100% conforming lot to build on, and that's what we're trying to eliminate. We're buying parcels of land and combining with the other ones to make buildable lots, so.
Well, I'll have to take your word for it, that it's not a buildable lot, but it sure looks like it should be large enough, I mean...
I think the challenge comes in as far as the front footage of that particular lot, that's what, what is the issue with it.
It's bigger than the one their house is on.
Because the front footage on the bottom, it only butts it right here, and that's, that's the problem with that particular lot. We have front footage requirements on it, and that's where it comes into play.
So we'd, you'd have to acquire right away to put a road in there, because there is no road through there, right?
The road turns.
The road turns, yep.
It's L-shaped there, yes.
But it turns there.
Yeah, I drove by there, you can do a little loop around the corner.
Or a motion to introduce?
So moved.
It's been introduced by Mayor Zilka. Purchase agreement, independent school district, 482, 18th Street Northeast, approve. John?
So this is the, this is the purchase agreement that we have, um, with the school district on the property that is intended for the development for Barrett Pet Foods, as I described in the work session. If this, um, if something were to happen with this, with this project, the development weren't, weren't successful, we weren't able to move forward, the purchase agreement is contingent upon all the pieces of the development coming together, so we're not, we're not stuck with the property if, if we can't develop it. So this is, it is strictly contingent upon, uh, everything working out in, in the TIF district, uh, would be utilized to, over time, as those increment dollars were collected, that would be used to, to pay off for, pay the, back the school for the, for price of the land.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Conoffla, to approve the purchase agreement with the school. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, Resolution 2018-83, establish a pay increase for Board of Equalization, adopt. John?
Yes, this is to increase from $10 to $15. The last salary increase for the Board of Equalization was in 1994. This board meets typically once per year. It is comprised of the council president and the mayor and myself. I am not compensated by this resolution as, during my normal working hours. So this is, uh, it's very small, um, very minimal impact to the, to the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So wish of the council on Resolution 2018-83?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve Resolution 2018-83. Discussion?
Well, I need to abstain from that, I would guess.
I was just gonna say, we maybe should table this because both Greg and Jeremy are gonna have to abstain, the council president and mayor are gonna have-
I shouldn't have to abstain, because that's not gonna be my position, coming forward to, for increase.
Very true, very true, so, yes.
It's not effective until 2019.
2019, yes, yes, that's right.
Well, there's five of us.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll.
Zilka?
Abstain.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2018-84, establish volunteer firefighter salary, adopt. John?
Again, this is, uh, we talked about this in the budget, um, timeline. We've did some analysis, looking at other, uh, other of our paid-on-call fire departments in our neighboring areas. We do call this, call them volunteers, but technically, they are paid-on-call employees of the city. Our firefighters go through special training, have to do, have to meet certain requirements for, for attendance to, to meetings and fires and, and whatnot. They serve a very valuable, uh, necessary purpose in our, in our community. Their salary, what hasn't been raised in a very long time, I don't even recall the last time that it, that it was. It is, it is going up significantly from $7 to $5 per hour. However, looking at budgetary impact, it is in the, it's in the budget that's been approved for the coming year, um, as well as the, uh, slight increase to the firefighter retirement fund, um, as well. So this is a, an effort to really, um, help retain and recruit firefighters for their, for the on-call, paid, paid-on-call fire department that we have in the city.
What's the wish of the council for Resolution 2018-84?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Conoffla, to approve Resolution 2018-84. Discussion?
I think if we looked, as we looked at, you know, where ours fell within other communities, our size in other communities, I, it was rather embarrassing to see how low it was. It was-
I would say, we were the only one that was below $10. Most are in the, you know, 12 to 15, and somewhere as high as $19 an hour in our neighboring communities.
So I think it's long overdue.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2018-85, establish part-time employee salaries, adopt.
Again, this is in keeping with the, uh, the minimum wage requirements that we have, as well as this will fix, uh, fix the minimum, and then the other positions that are above the minimum will fall in line, similar to our pay schedule that we have for full-time equivalent employees.
What's the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-85?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Conoffla, second by Councilmember Lundberg, approve Resolution 2018-85. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2018-86, authorize submittal of grant, transportation alternative grant, bicycle slash walking trails. Greg?
Yeah, we'd like to submit a grant. We'd like to submit a grant to, uh, transportation alternative. Essentially, we're looking at, uh, three different locations throughout the city. One would be a trail on the south side of Pine Avenue, another one would be an extension along 9th Street Northeast, uh, from Highway 27 up north three blocks. And then the other one would be, uh, from essentially Lincoln School on the west side, uh, over to the Boys and Girls Club. Right now, there's a block of sidewalk that's missing in there. And then we'd like to add three, uh, rapid flashing beacons, basically when there's pedestrians crossing Trunk Highway 27, it would alert the, the drivers that, uh, those folks are crossing. It would replace the two that are currently on, uh, Trunk Highway 27, the one by Lindbergh School and the one by Lincoln School, and then we would add a third one over on the west side by, uh, Mary of Lord School, which would be 3rd Street on the west side. Uh, our portion of the grant, or of the project would be $195,000. The remainder would, we'd be looking for grant funds to, to cover that, uh, which is a roughly an 80/20 split. There's a couple of ineligible items, which are, uh, engineering, but we've got staff to be able to, uh, to handle that, and that is figured in that $195,000 mark. So tonight, we are asking the council to approve the, the grant application for that project.
What's the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-86?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve Resolution 2018-86. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2018-88, establish polling places, 2019. John?
Again, this is the same, uh, established polling places that have been, that were in 2018. Uh, this would really only be for any need of special elections in 2019, seeing it's not a general election year.
What's the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-88?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Conoffla, second by Councilmember Lundberg, on Resolution 2018-88. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Any reports?
Mr. President, um, I would just like to thank President Hanfler for his service on the council, this'll be his last meeting. He's done a great job as president, uh, he's got a great background on the infrastructure of the city, um, and he brings a lot to the table. We don't always agree, but, uh, we can discuss respectfully, and, uh, I'm also gonna miss him on the RDFA board, so Jeremy, thank you very much for your service.
No, it's been a pleasure working with all you guys for over the last eight years, so there's, someone would be missed, and obviously, some of it won't be, but it'll be, looking forward. I've got other things in the works, so it'll be good.